Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:34. This is the Mendon Select Board. Thank you for coming. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forgot to stand up.
You gotta put your beer down, see? Okay, adding or deleting items. I have nothing to add or delete.
So Val, we're gonna table the approval of the minutes for 122 and 26. Until you guys have a chance to review them. And then I do wanna add one thing. It's a correction to some information that I gave at the, or a clarification about the town meeting articles. So I just wanna add a brief statement about the town meeting articles. If you could add that.
Okay, so we will add a briefing to letter F under Business, under the Town Report. And we will table the minutes under Administrative Matters, letter B, the minutes from January 22nd. And from the meeting on February 6th, we will table those.
So that's a motion on the floor, Seth?
Sorry, I didn't say that. Seth, I'm making a motion to table the minutes, letter B. And to add communication, letter F, under Town Report.
Okay, one second, Val.
All in favor?
Aye. It's pretty easy.
Number four, under Administrative Matters. We've had a chance to look at the orders and payroll. Making a motion to approve the orders for January 31st, 2024, in the amount of $63,906.99. And February 7th of this year for $5,682.12. And payroll for January 9th of this year, $18,260.71.
Second tap.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number five. Under Announcements, the town meeting will be on March 4th of this year at 6:00 PM at the V-Trans Building. Same as last year, 61 Valley View in Mendon. And the polls open the following day, March 5th, 8:00 AM, and the office will be open from 8:00 to 7:00 PM. Have no further announcements. Moving on to public comment. We will allow two minutes per person, please. Does anyone?
This is Justin here. If you...
Hi, Justin.
Yeah, do you want me to go first or wait?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to let the Select Board know that it's very difficult for us to meet online in the Planning Commission when we have an applicant, because we have to go over a lot of things, like their mapping, where they're gonna put driveways and whatever. And we actually help them out with their mapping. You know, it's done with pencil and paper and it's very difficult if we have to help them out online when we can actually have them in the room to work with. Because we like to approve business whenever possible, whenever things make sense, and we try to help them to do it properly. And it's gonna be very difficult if we have an applicant that we can't deal with in person. That's just my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Fred Bagley, can I add a parallel comment?
Sure.
In addition to the Planning Commission having to meet in person and requiring access to the building, the zoning administrator is charged with preparing materials for Planning Commission meetings. That's in his job description and Steve works full-time, so the time that he can devote to prepping materials for our meetings has to occasionally be at his convenience, not when, in those restricted hours. So we're also wondering for Steve's responsibilities to the Planning Commission, how his access can be expanded. And secondly, from my time last year as the interim zoning administrator, there were occasions where I met with applicants in the town office as well to review maps and so forth in anticipation of subdivision applications, et cetera. So, and I'm guessing not all of those potential meetings can also be carried out during those restricted hours. So the Planning Commission is concerned about how it and its people who work for it and the people who apply to it can get access to the town office in hours other than the currently announced hours.
Thank you.
And then if I could add another parallel comment. It's just, it's proven to be, since the new hours were instituted, it's been quite cumbersome for me to follow through on my job for the town. The hours that law enforcement is present and we're allowed to go into the building. Just, it's in the core of my day job, if you will, and and I have a job that I can't really, I can't really do it online. I frequently needing to go in and out of the files that are in, you know, in the ZA's office. And I, it's just, it's been hard. I've got two or three pending permits that, you know, I need to, I'll need to make time out of my day tomorrow morning to get in there and process the paperwork. So previously, I'd been able to do it evenings or on weekends and it worked out quite well. Now it's just, it's become burdensome to be truthful. So I guess the three of us, Fred, Justin and myself, you know, on behalf of the Planning Commission and the zoning administrator, we were hoping that we could maybe get some sort of perhaps exemption specifically for, you know, for me to be able to get into the building, you know, as necessary or as you deem reasonable. And then eventually, we do, I know that there are going to be some applications, because I've spoken with a few folks, that are gonna require not only Plan Commission review, but ZBA review. So those are definitely, those are coming quickly. And not trying to give short shrift to, you know, to the concerns of the Select Board, very valid indeed. And unfortunately, I don't have a silver bullet here, a magic bullet, to to offer alternative suggestion other than allowing me to go into the building.
Can I speak? As we know, previously, there were issues with security as far as people being threatened and in and out of the building possibly could be dangerous for people. So I think the Select Board is doing the right thing by keeping it closed or closed on a limited basis because they're trying to keep everyone safe. That includes the Select Board employees like yourselves, gentlemen, and any volunteers or people from the town, just the plain old townspeople that come in to do business. Thank you.
I appreciate everyone's comments. We all do. And we do share your concerns. There's no doubt that this weighs heavily on us, and this is the first time we've been faced with an issue as specific as this. And it's difficult. We're trying our best to navigate our way through this. I just want you to know that your comments and your presence here tonight, they mean a lot. And we're trying, we're trying to move forward in the best way we can.
Well said.
Do we have further public comments?
Maybe just Val, I mean, could there be some consideration that, you know, I could have access at times, you know, when just myself, you know, in, you know, in hours that law enforcement is not, is not present. You know, they would be irregular, so I don't, you know, it wouldn't be on a scheduled type of an arrangement. I guess, you know, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any any residence in the building. It's just really purely so I could have access to records and and files and just so I can effectively do my job. I guess I would request maybe an exemption to the, to the policy. You know, that's in place now.
I, myself, will not do that, and I respect what you need. But I cannot sit here and say, yes, Steve, go into the building after what we have been faced with. And I do send my apologies, but that's literally putting me in a position to say that you that you would be safe. And I can't say that you would. And I I really, I really wish there was a solution, there was help from someone higher up. I don't know how to do this. We haven't stopped trying to figure it out. I don't have anything else to say right now. I'm sorry.
Well, can I speak in here too? I just think, I mean, I have a different idea on that. I mean, I really think we need to move forward here one way or another. And if we do need to speak with somebody higher up, so to speak, or whatever we have to do, this is priority. We need to move forward here because it's so difficult for anybody, Steve, Jesse, Nancy, to work and get their jobs done. I mean, the sheriff is sitting there all day long and, I mean, not to say something couldn't happen, but I mean, for what we're basing this on, I'm just, it's words we're basing this on, I feel. And I think we just have to look at it that way a little bit. And I think if our, if it's our employees' choice to be there and everybody feels safe doing so, we should really look into it. I understand exactly what you're saying, Val, too. I mean, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but I just, I think we really need to push this. That's, that's it. So, whatever it takes.
Justin here, just for one more comment. I've had several death threats against me over the years, plus a few other little doodads. And when you get a death threat, it means anywhere, the Grand Union, your own house. It means anywhere. It does not mean just where you are working. And always keep that in mind. Death threats are everywhere. When you get one, that means you are a target everywhere. So we need help from the state of Vermont, and I know there's gotta be somebody up there who knows what they're doing. We just have to find that person or persons or outfit to help us out here, because we can't just keep shut this place down.
100% agree with you. Unfortunately, the town becomes responsible if something happens because they weren't notified of violence towards town staff and volunteers. So the town has to be responsible for this. As, as town people, I'm pretty sure that you spoke with attorneys, the town's attorneys and other people to try to work this out, and what were we told, what were you told? That there's really nothing you can do because the person who received the threat felt it wasn't a threat. So by saying that, you automatically make this threat non, you dead-ended the threat, but unfortunately, it doesn't mean that it's still not a threat. You know, this is what happens in schools. Years ago, people used to ignore the threat. And then what happens? You shoot up a school. Do we need our small office to be shot up or something else? You have to take the threats here. Is anyone on this, is anyone on this call, a mental health provider who can verify and then say, okay, this is okay? I can't. I'm not a mental health provider. Does anyone have the proper training to say that this threat was not a threat?
Lisa, point taken there, but schools get bomb threats, they clear the situation and then they're opened after that. If somebody threatens to shoot up a school, the threat is taken care of and the schools reopen. I mean, you, 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 you know, we're shutting.
100% right, Seth. You're 100% right. Unfortunately, the state of Vermont, the law enforcement in Vermont, and everyone else in Vermont has done nothing about this to investigate this because it was dead-ended as soon as somebody said, I don't believe this threat was really valid. I believe it was said in anger. No threat like that should be said in anger. And this is a state where people carry guns, so take it up a notch.
So, so let me ask this. I think Justin had a really good point. So how are we protecting our people at home? Or are we just protecting our town office?
The town has to protect them within the town's properties.
Why are our guys working on the highway department then?
Because, maybe I'm mistaken, but I believe the town attorney had told the people who work for the town that they can get their own order of protections or stalking orders or something of that sort for your own private property. But the town has a responsibility within the town's hours of operation on its properties.
How come our highway guys aren't, don't have a sheriff there, though?
Well, you know what? You want that? Let's put it in the budget and pay for them to have an escort at 40 hours a week. You know what? Put that up to the town voters.
I'm just, yeah, I think we should put it all to the, I think we should put it all to the town board. I'm just saying, like, if we're in that situation, we're being liable for them, too. Everybody, you know, we're all threatened.
The State Fish and Wildlife Board, which I was on, I was put on there because of a death threat against my predecessor, because I can handle those. I've handled plenty of them. They get death threats every year. Certain individuals on the board, including the commissioner, they do not shut down. You can't.
I'm not, and who told us that we have to shut down, though? I don't remember hearing that. I guess maybe I missed that from our attorney? Anybody know?
When we received the threat, Seth, I called the office and gave them the option to leave. Because I, I don't feel that anybody should have to sit at a town office the day after a threat and feel like they need to answer questions for the town amendment when their life was on the line.
Absolutely.
Can I just ask a question? Because Terry Corson is unable to attend tonight and asked me to ask this question in her stead. If the Planning Commission receives an application through its zoning administrator for, for instance, a subdivision review, and we have to warn and meet in a public space, do we then have to meet within the current existing hours, or can Terry on her own arrange for sheriff protection if we meet at our customary evening hours? And who would have to approve if it's anything outside of the Planning Commission and the applicants and the public meeting during a warned Planning Commission meeting, for instance, on a zoning subdivision?
I don't think you need approval. I think you need the sheriff, the sheriff's availability. And we, we are getting a staff meeting together to talk about all of this and
So if Terry, if Terry has, you know, if you get an application, you have to act on it within a certain defined state statutory defined period of time to respond to it, et cetera, et cetera. So Terry, does Terry therefore have permission and authority to contact the sheriff and say, we're meeting at 5:30 Monday, we need two hours of your time?
I believe so. Am I wrong, Sarah?
No, because you've approved, you've approved that. It's that they can be present at physical meetings.
And so
The problem is gonna be, Fred, is the problem is gonna be scheduling.
Yeah.
So Terry would have to, Terry would have to book the sheriff as part of her warned meeting. And so it may or may not be at a customary time. If if sheriff availability is more important than convenience and tradition of, you know, our usual meetings, first Monday of the month, et cetera, then Terry would just, does she have the ability, the running ability to do that?
Yes, she'd have to warn it accordingly.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Well, and I just wanna clarify things because if anyone reviews this tape after that isn't present at the meeting, currently, all town municipal functions are operating fully functionally remotely. So you've used words like shut down the town. We have not shut down the town. Everybody is working and meeting all of its obligations for municipal duties. Are they cumbersome? Absolutely. Does it create a hardship? Absolutely. Do we need to get better at possibly remote meetings and electronic correspondence? Yes. But everybody, all town functions are operating fully functionally in a different way right now.
So, okay, let me chime in on that, please. I'm sorry. I have to disagree. Our employees who are, I mean, maybe you, Sarah, I mean, you've been kinda used to be doing that and, and, you know, the girl, Nancy and Jesse would like to be there. They don't feel threatened. I mean, here's the thing, like, because somebody said something, I mean, wouldn't we have been liable previous if somebody walked in and shot up the place? I mean, if our employees feel safe doing it, and for one, again, our highway guys are
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
This is the first time I've heard that the employees that work at the town feel safe.
Okay, so listen. They want to go back to work. They feel safe enough to go back to work.
Then it would be nice to hear it from them.
Okay, that's, that's all fine and good. I just we just, we're not, all right. So we just have meetings in such spread out times here. Sarah, I understand. Yes, we're working from home. Okay. We, we have a town office, though. I mean, we have a town office that was spent money on. It's a beautiful place. Our community wants to be able to use it. Can we rush, rush forward? I know we're gonna do a meeting too, Val, so I'm not trying to jump that forward.
Well, I just got, I just got some communication yesterday, maybe, that we wanted to talk about this further and change things from the staff. So that's, that's a good start.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we all, like, the whole town has, I mean, everybody who I've spoken with is like, are we gonna open again?
But the whole town does not sit inside that building where the threat, am I correct? A lot of people complain when they sit at home, Seth.
I know, I know.
A lot of people complain because they're not the target.
The threat is the people, not the building.
It made me change my mind. You could have everybody here in the town complaining to me that they, that they don't like it. So I would, I would graciously say, will you please come up with a solution and will you please sit in that office and be on the receiving end of everything that Jesse and Nancy, that, that they go through, that I've listened to for three years?
We can keep the doors shut. The girls can work there just as they were, though.
Well, that, we'll take that up on Friday morning.
Is it liability or is it just a worry of us? Is it, is it a legal liability? And we will talk about this with the girls. I just happen to, you know, know a little information myself, that's all. And I can understand that. I mean, it's very difficult. Their, their paperwork, everything's there, you know what I mean? It's just, I think, I think we all should be there. I think anybody who's working should be there, honestly. That's just my opinion. So we'll leave it at that. And, and I'm not trying, listen, I'm not trying to tell you, you're making the wrong decisions. Okay? We are all here for a reason. Our own opinions and our own insights on things, correct? Right? So, okay, we're not protecting our highway guys. So if it's a liability thing, I guess we should put it in the budget and have a sheriff sitting there as well. Okay? The other fact is we're gonna run out of sheriffs. I mean, what are we doing? I mean, we're gonna over, we're gonna spend so much money doing this and
We're not spending any more money than we did previously with the sheriff.
Okay, but the sheriff's not out protecting anybody else either. And we're on a big issue with speeding, right? And all this stuff we're talking about. Now we're not, I mean, everybody wants to do that. We just got out of a meeting about that. Now we're taking our sheriff on those two days, or we're paying more, you know, we're taking less time from highway patrol and, and safety for people all over for our town office. I think it's a simple solution, and, and we'll talk about it at the other meeting, but like bulletproof, you wanna do it festival? We should be able to do that in two weeks. Done. Put it in the budget, we'll do it. It's done. Doors are locked. They're safe. That's it. Done. And, and that's all, that's it. Okay? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Does that conclude public comment?
Yeah, I think so.
Moving on to Business. Thank you, Greg. Can you pronounce your last name for me, please? With the Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me all right?
I can, thank you.
Yeah, Austin is Pelker, Greg Pelker.
Thank you for being with us. You have the floor when you're ready.
Hi, everyone. So the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is updating the region's plan for 2026. This is a plan similar to a town master plan, but relates to the Rutland region as a whole, which is Rutland County minus Pittsfield. And this document is updated every eight years, and the new one's gonna come out in two years, 2026. But the Regional Planning Commission is putting a lot of time and effort into this up Uh, but the regional planning commission is putting a lot of time and effort into this update. Usually it's a minor changes that occur to the plan, but we're completely rewriting it and we're hoping to get as much input from people from, in the communities that we serve as possible. So, um, we're hoping that we can hear your thoughts on, uh, what you want to see and what you don't want to see from the region going forward. And, um, currently we have nine responses to our community engagement survey from Menden residents. And we're hoping to get at least ten more. Um, I'm going to send the link in the chat right now so you can all have that survey and it's pretty fast to take. Only takes about 10 minutes to do. And, um, if you have a chance, we'd really appreciate, uh, you taking it and also sending it out, um, through whatever channels are best to other people in Menden so they can also contribute their thoughts. Um. Yeah. So is anyone have any questions about that? Um, or any other input?
Do not. Thank you for the link.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for, uh, letting me join your meeting tonight.
Greg, we will distribute this information on our social media and our website. Um, as well as have it available at the polls for town meeting.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm not looking for pats on the back, but I did, uh, fill out the survey. It's very quick. It's one of the least clunky surveys of all the ones you kind of get online. You know, do you like your car dealer and all that sort of stuff? It's a very easy one to use. So I, I recommend people help them out.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Moving on to letter B. Oops, sorry Greg. Go ahead.
There are no other comments, uh, unfortunately. I have to head out. I'm going to meeting in ten minutes right now. So I gotta get in the car and drive.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You also. Moving on to letter B, uh, road commissioner appointment because, um, Bill, our previous road commissioner has finished and retired. Uh, as of February first, we will appoint Chris Baird as our road commissioner. I make a motion to do this.
I second that.
Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And just to clarify you guys, that, that term would end three thirty-one of next year, 2025. It's a one-year appointment.
I just realized, um, letter C and H are the same.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. Do you want me to just give a briefing of what they do or?
So this is the program that pays for, um, upgrades or replacements of our dry hydrants in, um, Menden. And, um, the Easter Jakers homeowners association has submitted an application under this program. Um, in order to maintain their two ponds, um, in the development. Um, previously or annually, uh, Rutland City Fire Department through the chief, Bill Lovett, has tested the two dry, they test all the dry hydrants in, uh, Menden, but the two in, uh, Easter Jakers, they have reported as functioning. The eligibility of this program does not pay for upgrades or replacement of dry hydrants until they are no longer able to be used. So, um, Easterage is asking for the select board's support of their application. Um, however, Troy Dare is stating that, um, or I'm sorry, Bill Lovett is stating that the, um, dry hydrants are functioning. But it, it does come before the board. Um, I submitted an email from Troy Dare that explained, um, you know, the stance from their program. Uh, which is essentially if it's, if it's not fixed, they can't fix it.
Um, I, I did, I did read that email and I have full faith in Bill Lovett and in the future, should one of these dry hydrants need to be replaced or fixed, then I will be in support of, um, being a part of, um, helping them at that point. I don't see any reason to help them when we, um, are told that it is fully functionable right now.
Seth, you, do you have any statements there?
Not, not really. We're okay with that. I mean, we don't, I mean, if it's working, then it's working.
Yeah. Um, another question that I asked, uh, Troy Dare about is we have, um, other dry hydrants that are priorities in Menden to, uh, upgrade and replace. Uh, the next one on the list to replace is Woodard Road, which is not functioning right now. That, uh, will be applying for, uh, this grant funding to replace that project and hopefully go out to bid on that, uh, soon and do construction in the construction season of this year. And that's all I have on that one.
Um, Steve, I would like to say also that I will be in contact with you midday Friday and give you an update of our meeting.
Oh, that, that would be great Val. Um, can, can I get off point just for one second? Um, I did, um, I, I, I didn't hear, uh, did, did you folks review the proposal from Steve Fenn, the architect about, uh, the, the town office fortification project?
I did see that. Uh, we will also talk about that. On Friday, we will, we will look at that. Um, but there was, there was also no projected total. I would like to see that.
Okay.
Moving on under business, under letter D. The Rutland County Little League has requested to use our ball field again. Um, last year, the board waived the facility use fee, but requested help with spring cleanup and the placement of a porta potty. If we had that same agreement, um, this year. Is anybody from the Rutland County Little League with us this evening? Do you need a motion for that Sarah to put that, um, if they were to agree with that?
Yeah. So I just wanted to add, get the select board's, um, feel for what they wanted to require for this year. So I could work with them on what to put into their agreement for approval. Um, in addition to the porta potty, we talked about a, um, a spring cleanup of the ball field.
So with the spring cleanup of the ball field, are we, are we, uh, what, what will they be using? Just rakes and stuff like that? Are we going to need some clay? Um, are we liable or are they able to, um, do that through our, through liability?
Yep. So there would be volunteers and we have up to $25,000 in liability coverage for our volunteers. Um, the use of, um, mechanical equipment. Uh, you know, that, that would have to be, um, evaluated as far as, you know, if they had clay delivered, you know, the, the people need to be insured.
Okay.
If a delivery of clay was needed, we could arrange that through the town or, uh, it would, we would have to ensure that they are insured.
Okay. Okay. I, I, well, all right. So with that, I'm sure if we do need clay or something. My, my experience, I haven't been down there. I can check it out here soon and I'll see what it looks like. Um.
Yeah, there's no snow.
Yeah, right. Start playing ball. Um, so usually you need a piece of equipment one way or another and, um, you know, especially to get clay because you have to shuffle it over. I doubt they're going to want a wheelbarrow that much, but, um, we'll check it out, I guess. Um, I just wanted to kind of get your idea or what our liability situation. Um, and do we, what about our, our lawn tractors? Do we, do we have a little trailer maybe? And are we having our own guys mow the lawn this year too?
We are. Hopefully that, we'll have that third guide on board by then to, uh, to do, make mowing a lot more scheduled than it was last year. Um, so yeah, we, once we find out what the needs are down at the facility, then we can figure out who can do what. Um, but as we go into an agreement with Rutland County Little League, I would just encourage the board to specify, um, that they're willing to waive the user fee for, you know, some of these other services, which is the porta potty and help with maintaining the field in the beginning.
Yep. It makes sense.
To get it ready for them. Um, yep. So if, if you have any specifics Seth, let me know and I can, um, communicate that with them or, um, figure out who's going to do what.
Absolutely. I'll check it out and let you know.
And certainly if there's anything that you think our guys can do easily, you know, let us know and we can evaluate that with their regular, um, work schedule.
Sure. I'll check it out.
Yep. So, but you're in agreement with the, um, waiving the fee with the added of this, you know, the same type of agreement as last year?
I, I feel good with that. How about you Val?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I'll also let Liam know. He's the direct, he's the, um, chair of the recreation committee.
Okay. Moving on, um, to letter E, the town meeting preparation. I believe the only report that we will be presenting is the budget report.
Um, Dave Brooks has something to ask.
The discourse back about security on the office and, and all that stuff. Um, and, and really not getting any, anything positive from, from the, uh, from the state or the county. Suggestion I would propose is from articles three through nine, I would pull back all that money. And I'd also pull back the $27,000 to Rutland Free Library. And then see what kind of reaction you get. And when they ask you why, that's because we need that money for security for our office staff and for our highway crew. And our residents. And see what you get from that. And I think when you pull back money, you start getting some reaction and maybe you'll get some politicians that'll take some note. Cause you haven't gotten anything yet. And I think you're just going in circles right now. That's my reaction.
Thanks Dave. My, my, my response to that is yeah, I mean, we got a meeting coming up with, with, uh, the staff soon. Um, why don't we look into, look into this matter after that and see where we stand. We may be able to do things quicker and actually get somewhere, um, quicker than we think, but thank you.
Can I ask a question about this just quickly? Have we, have we asked the Vermont Council of City and, uh, League of City and Towns for any support in this or guidance in this situation?
So I'll just recap that for you Megan. Um, the town of Menden has been in contact with the Vermont State Police, the Rutland County Sheriff, the state's attorney's office, the secretary of the state's office, the LCT, the governor's office, our representative, uh, Jim Harrison. Am I missing anyone Val?
No.
So, um, the town of Menden is exploring all options.
Okay. I just didn't know about League of Cities and Towns, so.
Sure.
Uh, progress moving forward also, I haven't, I haven't mentioned this to, um, the select board, Sarah, anybody that we did have a, uh, proposed policy that we, we could adopt, um, kind of like a one, two, three strike, strikes. You're not allowed to come here. Um, and I, I think I will present that again and maybe go over that even though we are trying. This is, this is difficult. Um, and I do respect everyone's views, everyone's ideas. Um, I, I care about everybody. And I want, sorry, I want everybody to be safe.
Um, so I'm just going to bring us back on task with the agenda because we're right now, we are under, um, preparing town meeting preparation. And, um, we keep circling back to the same subject, although majorly important, we're just, we need to move forward with the agenda. Um, the town meeting presentations are, uh, primarily just over the budget. That's the only question that we have on the ballot. Uh, the rest of them are appropriation questions. Um, so I will prepare a, uh, financial summary of the changes of the budget along with, um, some of the plans that we're having, um, you know, some of the projects and plans that we're undertaking and planning for. And then, um, Val, if you would like to give that presentation, um, and then Seth, I'll work you in somewhere to also, um, address the, the town at some point during the meeting.
That's fine.
Does that sound good Seth?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thanks Sarah.
Um, can we move on to town reports?
Uh, letter F under business, town reports in progress.
Okay. So the town reports are coming in, um, slower than normal. Um, we are behind schedule in preparing the final draft of the town report. Although we're definitely going to meet all statutory deadlines, um, about a week ahead of schedule. Uh, it is later than what we normally, uh, potentially publish the town report. Uh, you will see a draft this week of the, um, highlights and objectives, which is just a summary of what we've done um, last year, what we're undertaking right now and what our goals for the future are on what we plan to do. Um, that's usually a two to three page report, which just summarizes, um, some of the things that we've addressed with the goals and objectives um, that we've identified. Uh, other than that, it's, um, I'm working with the office staff in order to proofread um, all the reports this week and hopefully, um, it will be posted by the end of the week, if not early next week. Do you have any questions about the town reports?
No.
No. All set.
Uh, Sarah, not a question on the town report, but, uh, Terry has asked me again in her absence on March 4th to um, notify the people in attendance that the planning commission will be uh, starting a rewrite of our zoning bylaws, our zoning regulations. Does that have to go on the agenda then as a, uh, for me to speak?
At town meeting?
Yes.
So um, I would suggest that the uh, planning commission possibly prepare a hand note. Um, or we can make an announcement of that, but it's not a discussion at town meeting because that's not a warned article.
So could I, how do I just make an announcement? Do I, uh, on March 4th that that this process is starting?
So we can let um, Court Chrisones is the moderator. And he can, I mean, he's in charge of addressing that.
So do I contact Court or is this, or can I?
I'm sorry, did I say Court? I meant Chris.
So do I contact Chris or do you, does Terry contact Chris or what? How does, what's the process to make an announcement?
So I will, I will be reiterating that with him too, is I give him an outline of what um, people might be bringing up. So I will let him know that the zoning or that the planning commission is undertaking a zoning rewrite and that they'll be looking for um, for community input on that process over the course of the next year. Um, so and then I'll tell him that Terry will be available to answer any questions or if in Terry's absence, she might not be there. She might appoint somebody else from the planning commission to speak on that behalf.
Okay. She's already appointed me. Surprise.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Fred, I will, um, I'll send an email to Chris and I'll copy you on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. So I just want to remind the select board that even though it's a gathering of the town, we are not in charge of this meeting. Um, Court Chrisone, or I keep saying Court. Chris Chrisones, his brother, um, has been our moderator for many years. And uh, he is the one that chairs the meeting. The select board will have an opportunity to give that um, the budget presentation. And without questions, we'll go on to the goals and objectives review. Is that okay, Val?
That's fine. I didn't feel a need to repeat what you just said. Moving on to letter G, goals and objectives.
So at the last meeting, I briefly gave you an overview of um, where we stood with the goals and objectives and and this is the time of year that we start looking at things that we can take off of this list and things that we will be finalizing and putting on this list um, for um, guidance just after town meeting. So I updated our 2023, 2024 goals and objectives with where we stand on each one of the projects um, and things that were added to the list, um, because they needed to be added to the list throughout the year, which um, primarily was um, us applying for and receiving multiple grants that we are working on or have completed over the course of the last year. Um, so I guess I want you to review this and come up with um, any suggested additions or deletions from the list or clarification on where we stand. Does that sound good?
Um, it does. I think maybe um, looking at our ARPA funds, the next meeting, we can get a better feel for where we stand there.
And we are including a status report of the ARPA funds in the town report as well, so that people know what we've spent money on and what we um, are still looking to consider.
Okay. I don't have any comments. Seth, is there any, anything you wanted to talk about on the, on the list?
No, I'm good, Val. Thank you.
Okay, so the last thing that was added to the agenda is I just wanted to clarify some of the information that I gave at the last meeting regarding the warning. So when we were talking about article three or article two, let me see, I want to get it right. Um, when we were talking about the amount of the budget, I had erroneously said the amount to be collected in taxes. And I reported that amount as 1,197,300. That is the amount to be collected in taxes if the appropriation articles pass. But the article asks what the budget amount is. And the budget amount, so this would be um, total expenses, not without taking into consideration that we have some revenue sources. Um, the budget amount, which is listed on the warning, is 1,378,303. So none of the information was wrong, but the, what number you're gonna see on the warning or what was on the warning that you signed was the 1,378,303 um, not to be confused with the amount to be collected in taxes, which was the different amount. So I just wanted to clarify that for the minutes. Um, after, when I reviewed last month's minutes, um, I noticed that there was um, need for clarification there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And that concludes business, Val.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything else for this evening. Um, we can adjourn the meeting at 6:31. Thank you, everyone, for coming.